Come out tonight. If you hadn't signed the book and you'd like to ask questions, we'll just need your signature. No problem to ask questions later. Please just sign the book for us, register book. At this time, we're going to look at approval of agenda. Council has asked to approve the agenda, subject to additions and deletions by council.
I'd like to, on the old business, under heading A, I'd like to add executive session.
Thank you, Todd.
Also, I'd like to add, I guess it'd be under old business, code enforcement, under D, and then E, veterans banners.
One last thing I have to add, thank you, Todd. I would also like to add that Ryan Zadzka with the new business had called this afternoon and something came up, Cincinnati Bell and by optics, he will not be able to attend this evening. And I also would like to add executive session, the Tobin Building, in reference to post office and library.
Is that our new business?
New business, yes.
Executive session?
Yes.
For what reason?
Did you say library?
Litigation.
Litigation?
Yes.
I'd like to add a budget amendment for beautification.
I'd like that, on the new business, I'd like to add, if everybody remembers back in December, add everybody work on some, I call them New Year's resolutions, but work out on some goals and plans for the city that they would like to get done. And since this is our regular meeting, I would like to go over mine, and then any discussions or anything over that.
Also, I would like to add the recycling bin.
Would that be new or old?
Old business, please. You had E, Todd?
Yes.
D and E, okay, I'll use that one now. Also, with the amendments to the budget, under budget amendment, old business, the cleaning, a detailed cleaner, once a month, still saving the city about $2,400 since we've not had a cleaner for some time. We can pretty much do the basics, but like, once a month, I'd like to have a detailed cleaner, around a hundred dollars, if that's possible. And the banners for the vets, and speak about those, as we have, Todd, some different avenues we might be able to take to save money from the Duke Foles. And also, a census banner in the budget for awareness of the Census Bureau, around $125 to $150 for that. I need a motion to approve this agenda unless anyone has any additional information they want to put on there.
I'll make a motion, no proof.
Second?
I'll say yes.
Thank you.
Danny?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erlene?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
And Joe is absent.
This time, I have the presentation of the minutes, minutes of the regular meeting from January 7th, 2020, is ready for approval, this time, subject to any deletion, additions, or corrections.
I would like to say that about the survey for the land cleanup, that it was not my recommendation to put that into the engineering fees, it was my recommendation to put it under public works, but I just would like to make that note. Do we, are we expecting any more engineering fees? I don't want to run that line item into the red.
I know, I talked, spoke to Park today about Hookwood, and he and Alex are going to get together and do the, come together with the bid. I don't think Artwood most likely charged for that. BNC's already been paid so much for what he's done already, I don't foresee that. I could be wrong, but they're going to get together and put a bid for the quote for the paper, so we can get some sealed bids for that. That, John?
I just don't want to run that line item into the red, so you want it to go under public works. I felt like it would be, there's plenty of money in the public works. I felt like it would go better there.
How much is that? About 1600, 1300 or 1600, I don't know how much it is. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Be the second. Counsel?
I'll say it.
Second. Thank you.
Danny?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erlene?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
And Joe is absent.
I did have one other question, about the resolution that we did for the American Legal Publishing. I thought that you told us that was going to be about $750, and in the amendment that you asked for, Dallas.
I told you, it was 450 to get it on the website, but we have to codify the ordinances to get them up to date, to go on the website. So, it's anywhere from $1,000 to $1,700 for the codification of the ordinances.
Mary, I don't need to answer. What's the definition of codification of the ordinances?
Alex, you want to talk with that?
Yeah, once you condense and put them into written format in your ordinance book, that's the codification of the ordinances.
They like condenses them down.
Put them all together.
So, will they still be in their full ordinance form when they go on the city website, or will they be?
Definitely in a full form.
They'll be in their full form?
Sure.
It'll be great. It'll be great.
Everybody's been asking me about it.
Sure.
This time, we have the treasurer's report making sense for the month of January 2020. Breath ready for approval, this time, subject to any corrections.
Our general fund balance was $614,349.41. Municipal road aid was $33,591.86. Certificates of deposits was $2,906,493.41. Checks will be free.
Can I ask what the CNA surety direct bid was for $213?
That was for the bonds for Mayor Patton, Donna, and for Joe Dugan.
Can I ask what Bramall and Ackley is?
That is the audit.
Okay.
Is that the same amount as last year they charged?
Yes.
January the 6th, the EFTPS?
That is for the taxes that we have to take out of payroll. That's the, you have to do them all morning.
Okay, is that a monthly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any overtime on this, this month's expenses?
Have you, did you give the agenda, Ms. Humphries, over the email?
Yes.
Okay. Do you see any overtime on there?
I don't know what you're asking. That's why I-
Do you see any overtime on there? There's, no.
That's why I'm asking, I don't know.
First off.
January the 9th, Grand County is 6:21.
That is for publishing. It is for, it's for, we had an advertisement for the Christmas get-together, we had legal for budget amendment, and then we had the curfew ordinance. And like, the curfew ordinance was $312 to publish, the budget amendment was $163. And the other was 145.
All right.
You're welcome.
Police and electric, they had to come in and they had to fix a light in the hallway, and they had to fix something.
Was that outlet? We had them come in, there was a, it was wired, thrown up, up the top-
In the ceiling.
In the ceiling, and they had to rewire that, the way that was wired, they wondered why the place hadn't burned down yet, so they had to rewire that. And the only reason we knew about that was the outlet on the outside wouldn't work for the Christmas lights, and so when they, they came to test that, and to see what the problem was, they found, they found that.
So, would it be in the best interest to have someone come in and look at a little more venture?
I would think that was inspected when it, it got put in, but that was how many years ago? It wouldn't hurt. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for this month?
I'll make a motion.
Is that, is that approved in these pages too? That was a question, on the first page, on the sideways papers, item number 540, it says law enforcement house, I guess HB stands for House Bill 413?
Yes.
What is that?
We get quarterly payments from Frankfurt, and it's, I don't know how it's based, Brian might be able to tell me more about it, but we get a percentage-
Probably offsetation driven, it's true.
Okay, that's, yeah. We, and that's a check that comes in, and we don't, we don't ever know how much they're going to be when they come in.
Does Sheriff's Department get money for the horn tickets they write to, Sheriff?
No. The only thing we get money for is warm surf. And city police are the only ones that get, that benefit from traffic-related citation.
And then on that same page, you're in the minus, on the bottom two, under 554 and 555?
Yes.
Excuse me, 553 and 554.
Because of revenue, we didn't project any of that revenue, because we never know if there's going to be any kind of revenue coming in. The discount, the discount is the discounts we get for the taxes, so it's going to be negative.
So, that's a negative because of the discount?
Yes.
That makes sense.
But the revenue, the miscellaneous revenue, that might be someone that's him in and paid old, old taxes, and we just put it under miscellaneous revenue because we weren't expected to get it anyway.
Did the sweet street sweepers bill go up?
They turn around my driveway all the time.
I'm glad they're doing your drive-by, Danny.
No, I wish they would.
Paula, it's, it's on this one, it's the road aid, it's not on that. Oh, okay.
Can we talk about the bank statements, or is that still on the treasurer's report?
Okay.
No, I'm not. There you go. I don't know if Megan and JD's credit cards got, they got confused and took the other ones, but we got JD buying ice cream on Sundays at Kroger's, and I don't know if that's for, is that for the inmates?
That was for the punks for Christmas.
Okay, was he working on a Sunday?
I asked him to pick it up. I don't, I didn't know that was on a Sunday, but I had asked-
The date, the date on the bill's on a Sunday, for Kroger's, for the Sherwood.
Okay. Could have been, he was there and I asked him to pick it up, or whatever day Christmas was on, was it on a Wednesday this year? Okay.
And I guess he got the candy for the Christmas too, from Big Lots?
Yes.
And Megan got Blacktop from Menards?
No, if you read that, that they're reimbursing that back. We, that was my fault, because the guy I didn't get back with is on Blacktop, and there were some roads on Russell in different areas, we were just going to do it ourselves. So, so we was getting Blacktop from Menards, they sold it like that, cold patch, is what they call it. And then they, the guy turned around and called, like, two days later, and he took care of it, so we'll be reimbursed back for that, if we have it already, maybe.
If we have it, hasn't showed up, state number.
Now, being government, are we tax exempt too, when we buy things on the business? Do we have like, a tax ID number, so when we buy things from like, Menards or this and that, that we can buy without paying taxes?
We do have a tax ID, although Megan explained how that is supposed to be set up with each company.
Yours, they have to take a certificate in every time, like, you're going to buy something, we're giving them one blank one. So, I guess they just, those weren't taken most days, those places like Kroger's, or to other like shores. And I know that-
Paulie Poe, Philman?
Philman, shut up. I will look into that, though.
Thank you.
Everybody done? Can I make a motion?
Motion, please.
Motion.
Second, treasurer's report.
A second.
Thank you.
Danny?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erlene?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
And Joe is absent.
This time, we have Jamie Baker with Chamber of Commerce, you want to come on up, Jamie? Thank you for coming out. It's lovely evening.
Well, it's Kentucky, you never know what will happen. Spend the night, it'll change. I'm going to talk briefly about the bicentennial and beautification, I'm going to roll them together, because that's just kind of the way I think of them. We have had a logo designed for the bicentennial, so this will be what is on all of our advertising materials, the T-shirts, the banners, that kind of thing, that we're going to have, because we are celebrating the 200th anniversary of Grand County in 2020. And as part of that, the judge executive asked me to spearhead the efforts to have bicentennial activities in the county. So, we began to meet with the mayors and the judge, and some other interested folks from the chamber, and said, you know, what kind of, what do we want to do? And the conclusion that we came to was, rather than have one giant celebration, we would rather have smaller celebrations in each community. So, we came up with the idea that Williamstown loves a parade, and so they wanted to do a big parade in a heritage-type festival. And they are not doing the Derby Day Festival this year, because seven of the last eight years, it's rained Derby Day out. So, they're actually going to go a couple weeks later, on May 16th, and do a heritage festival, and have demonstrations, a parade, have the log cabin open, and that's going to be their big bicentennial event. Dry Ridge is really good at fireworks, and they wanted to do something in conjunction with that, so they already had established a party in the park activity, so we're just putting the bicentennial tag on that, and it's going to be bicentennial party in the park, with a very large fireworks display on July 4th. They're going to have entertainment and music, and activities for the kids, and have that all at Piddle Park. So, we kind of bannied around an idea, what could we do in Creighton, and we came up with, we've got Grand County Park here, great place for a music venue, so what if we got a Bluegrass and gospel concert, and more of a heritage type as well, with demonstrations and some things like that. So, that's kind of how we came to the decision that we were going to do three major events. We're still looking at doing something in Corinth. Corinth is a little bit different, because they don't have a lot of resources, and they don't have a facility to hold, hold a large event. So, we're looking at maybe a car show or something, that we can still bring people there, and they can still be part of the bicentennial, but it just won't be as big, maybe, as some of the other events, so. I was here earlier, and the question was asked, you know, what do you think it would cost for the city to participate, to do something for the bicentennial? And the number that I gave you then was 10,000. Now, there might have been some misunderstanding, I wasn't telling you that the event would cost you 10,000, the event will cost whatever you want to put into. That's up to the city to duel. I just gave you the 10,000 figure, because that way, that's probably plenty to put on the event, and you won't have to go back and amend your budget, is what I was thinking of. What we're asking each city for right now is, tourism is more than willing to step up and pay for some of the entertainment at these festivals, because we can say that that is a tourist draw to our area. However, tourist, tourism dollars really can't be spent for like, banners to promote the bicentennial, or T-shirts, because you'd make, it'd be a hard argument to make, that that's going to bring visitors, because we have the beautiful logo on bicentennial T-shirts. So, we had a meeting last week, and several folks were there that had been serving on the committee as volunteers, and we kind of came up with a plan, if each city had a banner that had the logo on it, and then our festival dates, that would be something that, if we get that ordered in, in place, you could take it up or down, as you, if you wanted to advertise something else, you wouldn't have to leave it up all year, but it would designate all the way from Creighton to Corinth, that we are celebrating our bicentennial. We estimate the cost of a banner to be about $250, I don't imagine it would be much more than that, and we're going to purchase, attempt to purchase four or five of those to spread throughout the community. The other thing, in order to get T-shirts, what my idea was, we have three vendors in Grand County that are chamber members, and so whenever I'm going to do something, I always put out the bid to them, as local businesses, you know, and try to go with the best bid. So, because we, a lot of your older folks in the community may not be able to go online, or don't know how to shop online, what I really wanted was for one of the vendors to set up an online store, so that we're not in the business of collecting the money, if you want a bicentennial T-shirt, here's where you go to get it. But we felt like we needed a few to show people, and to have at some of the events, and some of the older folks who might not go online and buy them. So, we thought if we ordered about 100 of those, that we could get rid of. So, I have no interest in purchasing hundreds of shirts that I'm stuck with in our office for the bicentennial, so. So, we estimate that if each city in the county put up about $250 for that, that would give us enough to get started, and then, then people could see what we're doing, and we could always go back and order more. And we're actually going to sell those at cost, we're not looking really to make any money on those, it's just to have a way to honor our bicentennial. So, what, what we really need from the city of Creighton at this time, would be about $500 to kind of get us going, because there's no, there's no pot of money to pull from for this, so we're asking each city in the county to contribute. Now, if you all want to put aside more money in your budget for the actual Harvest Fest that we're planning to do at the park in September, that's your purview to do that, and that amount is up to the city. Like I said, tourism is going to fund booking some of the entertainment for that, because I think that we can absolutely make an argument that that's good tourism dollars, because we can pull people in. So, you know, it would be, be at you all's discretion if you put more in the fund to do that. And as I've said before, I would be happy to work with the city to develop the plan for that event, I could help you manage it, but my goal really is to, after the 2020 bicentennial, is hopefully, each city will see the value of that festival, and say, hey, we want to take that on as a project of the city, and then I could partner with you to do that, but then it becomes the cities, whether you do that through committee, or the council, or however you want to do that, is really up to you. We just, tourism just wanted to be the catalyst to get some things going in Grand County, because the one, number one complaint outside of we don't have enough hotels for people that we hear, is what are we going to do after we leave the ark? What is there for people to do? Which brings me to my next thing that I want to pass out. One of the things that I've been working on is a community events calendar, and we finally got it finalized, and I say that, and somebody will say, oh, no, you need to correct this, but I've proved it, corrected it, looked at it a thousand ways from Sunday, so I hope it's absolutely final. This will be on our Facebook page, on our website, we're going to advertise it on the radio, on TV, wherever we can, but this is a listing of all the community events that we've got planned for 2020, as far as tourism and visitors come in. And one of the things that we're doing, that I mentioned to you all briefly, we're going to do a market on May, music and market on May, and that's going to be once a month, on the third Friday of every month, it's going to be held twice in Creighton, twice in Dry Ridge, and twice in Williamstown. And we're going to bring in, I'm currently booking bands for that, I'm trying to go with regional bands and local bands, we're going to have food trucks, we're going to have the inflatables some there for the kids, and we're going to have some artists and craftspeople. I don't really want it to be like, a flea market type thing, I would rather have actual artists to sell things that they've actually made, that are local. And for the first year, to try to get this going, we're not going to charge anybody setup fees, so we're going to let all of our locals come, set up. I've been told that other communities do this, and they tell me if they have 50 that come out for that first year and support it, consider that that's a success, because it's something you want to do sustainable over time, and we have to build that. And I've had some people say, well, why are you moving it from community to community? Why aren't you putting it in one place and leaving it there? And the reason that we're, we're going to try this for the first year, is because if you anchor it somewhere, then that city kind of is, well, that's mine, and then the other cities don't feel like they have ownership of that. So, I feel like if we just educate the people, that here's our schedule, here's where we're going to be, and they get used to it, they're going to be fine with that, because they don't know any different anyway. So, we're really excited about it, because as I've talked to the community about it, people have said, oh, that's something that we, you know, will, will support, and that'll, that's something that we can promote to our visitors, but it's also something for our residents. And again, if they eat from the food truck, or they buy from the artists, that's up to them, but everything else will be free. Tourism is picking up the tab for that, to get that going in our community. So, we feel like that's going to be a very positive thing for Grand County, and I just wanted to make you all aware of that, as well as the calendar that we've got there. And as far as beautification, the night I was here, and you asked me, well, what did I think that you needed to put in your budget, and I threw out the $10,000 figure too, I guess I just like that number, it's nice and round. Beautification is, is completely up to the city, whatever you want to do. What tourism has said is, we are going to give you $3,500, is basically what it is. Now, you can, we have identified a place where we can buy flower pots, benches, and trash cans, and they're all black metal. Again, what we're trying to go for, and be a catalyst for, is to have the community start to look uniform. From Corinth to Creighton, everybody's got the same trash cans, because it just gives it a much more unified look, so.
And they're code, right? And they're the code, so.
Yes, yes. And they're commercial grade, so that's another thing, you just can't go down to Lowe's and buy things that the city would install, because it's got to be sturdy and that kind of thing. So, tourism is going to give each city in the county $3,500- What tourism has said is, we are going to give you thirty-five hundred dollars is basically what it is. Now, you can, we have identified a place where we can buy flower pots, benches, and trash cans. And they're all black metal. Again, what we're trying to go for and be a catalyst for is to have the community start to look uniform. From Corinth to Creighton, everybody's got the same trash cans, because it just gives it a much more unified look.
So.
Yes, yes, and they're commercial grade, so that's another thing. You just can't go down the Lowe's and buy things that the city would install, because it's got to be sturdy and that kind of thing. So tourism is going to give each city and the county thirty-five hundred dollars to spend. How you spend that is really up to the city. You can tell me, hey, I want four benches, I don't want flower pots and I don't want trash cans. I don't care what, what you determine that that money is going to be spent on, I just need to know by the end of February what it is you want me to get ordered. And the only thing that tourism asked of the city was that you all put some skin in the game as well by saying, okay, tourism, if you buy four benches, the city wants to buy another bench to go along with that. We're not asking for a dollar amount, we're just asking you to participate. And again, I really feel like if we start to show pride in the community and we start, start to show our residents and our visitors, I think that's going to catch on and people are going to see that. The city would be responsible for installing and choosing where you want to put them. I don't want to tell you where to do that, that's up to you all, I don't care. I just want to see our community start to take on a different look and a different feel. And so that's where we're working on these projects through tourism. So if you have any questions, please let me know. I'm very excited about the possibilities for Grant County, because I think we're, we're really on the cusp of some good things, so. Yes, Todd?
Could we get a list of what your calls or our calls would be for benches and flower pots?
Yes, yes, I have, I believe, did you get my email that I sent? I, I have actually, we've identified a company, the city of Williamstown used this company before to purchase their things. And I did some pretty extensive research and so did the city before they bought those. And there's not a lot of companies that actually make commercial-grade products like that. So I found one, this company that they use happens to be the cheapest one that I found, so that's what we looked at and went with. But I would be happy to get that to you. But I, I've identified what the planters look like, what the benches look like, and what the trash cans. And there's a couple of options on trash cans, because some have lids. And when I say lid, it's not one like you would pick up, it's like a cover, because we got to thinking about if it rains in there, that might be kind of nasty. So you might want to cover that to protect it a little better, and then maybe animals, rabbits, or not rabbits, rabbits don't get in trash. Raccoons get in trash. But I can certainly, yeah, I can certainly get that to you. So we've identified a company that we think is.
With pictures?
With pictures, yes.
What location would you have for the concerts in Creighton?
At the Grant County Park.
That's cool.
Yeah, just because the facilities there, bathrooms, parking, the amphitheater.
If Corinth's not able to do the car show, Park would be an excellent place for a car show too.
Mm-hmm, as well, yes.
And have you thought about asking any churches to join to see if they want to do cantatas or singing the old-fashioned way, get all the people together?
That's on my, that's on my list, yeah.
And lastly, all those pictures that you've been scanning, that people have been turning in?
Yeah, I haven't seen one yet.
In the back, well, we need to do this, in the back of your head, have you thought about doing a, a book?
Yes.
I always talk about Fort Wright, because I worked there for so long. You know, there's a book about Fort Wright.
Yes.
From the beginning on, have you all, have you ever heard people interested in Grant County, the history of?
Well, there are a couple of books that are out there, Danny. The Historical Society's put some together, the Great County News did a picture.